Liston City Council will come to order. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask if you would stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, then I'm going to ask if our Interim Fire Chief, Greg Reitmeyer, would approach the flag and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, then I'm going to ask Officer Kepner, if you would please join him up front, unannounced, but thank you, on this very special night, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. So, Reitmeyer, when you're ready.
And to the Republic, indivisible,天地之主也.
Thank you, Officer Kepner. Before we get into the citizen comments, I'd ask Chief Reitmeyer, if he would just share a few words with us about this important date in the history of our country. Chief Reitmeyer, please introduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, those in attendance here and online. Good evening. My name's Greg Reitmeyer. I have the honor of serving this community and the women and men that respond to citizens' requests for help as your interim fire chief. This evening, I'd like to take a moment during public comment to remember, 22 years ago this morning at 9:59, World Trade Center Number Two collapsed. 29 minutes later, World Trade Center Tower One collapsed, murdering 2,574 occupants. In addition, 60 police officers and 343 firefighters lost their lives. Since that horrific morning, an additional 341 first responders have died from the chemicals that they were exposed to during the response and recovery. In the hours and days that followed the attacks on our country, all across America, we banded together and we vowed to never forget. I stand before you tonight to keep my promise that I have not forgotten. I have not forgotten the firefighters and police officers that run into danger to save others. I have not forgotten that sometimes the known hazards we face are only the tip of an iceberg, that our death will happen years to come from illnesses caused by the chemicals and trauma that we're exposed to while doing the job. I have not forgotten the pain and suffering of the families that first responders experience from the loss of loved ones and the daily stress of the job. I have not forgotten the emotional scars that first responders carry and the harm that sometimes comes from what we're exposed to. Not forgotten the armed forces that hunted the guilty, that planned the attacks that day and continue to protect us so that we never experience an attack like that again. Finally, I have not forgotten the unspeakable honor your first responders feel to spend a lifetime dedicated to serving and protecting our community. Ladies and gentlemen, please join with me tonight, renewing our commitment to those that wear the uniform and serve, may we never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Reitmeyer.
Thank you so much.
Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, as a reminder, if you're here to comment on the public hearing, you must wait until the public hearing is opened. Also, your Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others in their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. If you're here tonight to present citizen comments, I'll ask you to declare your city residence, and you'll have three minutes to provide comments. So with that, I will open up citizen comments.
I'm Joan Bidisco and Frank, and I thank the policeman who has protected me 11 days now. I have a roof over my head temporarily, and I have an apartment. And I also thank the police and ambulance who have saved my life. I was severely poisoned, and I'm going to be living independent coming up on Thursday. I also want to have you guys think about what to do with the Civic Theater. The city has hired somebody to do the weeds, and it's looking good, but it's time. Black mold you cannot get rid of when it's gone this long. Right now, I'm moving in a place that is black mold, is what the person that's moved out. And I have a friend, the Todd family, that's going to help, but it's... So, black mold is... I'm going to go and go knock on doors for the family that live in the area. A white skirber does not want that, okay? He's a prominent man. He does not want the Civic Theater there. But I'm going to be knocking on the doors and find the owners on the other side, but I know every owner there most likely don't want it. So we are supposed to be helping our community, doing what the people want. It's wasting money. That money can go to the homeless. And I thank you for letting... To give more time for the Adult Resource Center. We do need homeless. I was on the streets for 11 days, and the police had to... I got very cold. I asked somebody to call the police to get a taxi. They took me to the hospital, I got warmed. Then I slept at Lewis Clark State College, and I also slept at... Went sorely. Then I slept many days at Joan McFarland, and I had it where it was warm, and Joanne and the police knew where I was. But last day, all my things were gone. And so, anyway, my friends let me stay. But it's hard being homeless. I have had many hospitalizations for being homeless just 11 days. I had to get... The last thing I had to do is get blisters to it, but I've been on IVs being homeless just 11 days. So we need to spend our money, get rid of things that are costing money, okay? And I'm running for city council. Vote Rehab is going to put me to school to run for city council, and the twin David's running. We're going to get people out, and I kept the clerk busy getting all the information on who voted for against the rock and also the community warming center. I'm going after planning and zoning.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Are there other citizen comments? Hearing none. We'll close citizen comments and move on to Roman numeral four presentations. Number A, Proclamation, Constitution Week. Recognizing September 17th to the 23rd, 2023 as Constitution Week, I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and I'm going to ask the daughters of the American Revolution to join me up by the American flag, and I will read this proclamation, present it to them, and then when we're done, if someone could help with taking a picture, please. Thank you for bringing that to us tonight. It's very special for remembering. Thank you. Next up, we have under Roman numeral four presentations, financial report, July 2023. Financial report for the month of July 2023 in accordance with Idaho Code. Title 50, Chapter 20. No oral report will be given unless there are any questions. I'm sorry, I should have stated this earlier. Counselor Lickie has an excused absence tonight, so she will not be joining us virtually or in person. Roman numeral five, public hearings and related action items. The first item here, A, is a public hearing on the Bolinger Building sale, and since I will be making the staff presentation, I'm going to transfer the gavel over to Counselor Schroeder, and she will run the public hearing. Counselor Schroeder.
Thank you. The public hearing, Bolinger Building Sale or Auction, accepting testimony regarding the proposed sale of the real property and building located at 805 Sixth Avenue in Lewiston, Idaho, commonly known as the Ann Bolinger Performing Arts Center, with a minimum purchase price of $67,000. Now, I'm going to open the public hearing, and then we'll have a staff presentation and a testimony, then testimony from the public, any counselor questions, and then I will close the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing now.
Thank you, Counselor Schroeder. It's my privilege, counselors, to bring to you tonight Resolution 2023-52, the Bolinger Building Auction, and I'm just going to read from the item history sheet. I have additional information here on the history of the building if you have questions for me, so I'm prepared to do that. Let me pull that out right now. Well, once again, I smartened myself and put it somewhere else. Darn it. I could have information if you have additional questions. On August 14th, 2023, council approved Resolution 2023-47 for the surplus and sale at auction of the real property and building located at 805 Sixth Avenue, commonly known as the Ann Bolinger Performing Arts Center. In August of 2016, the city building official condemned the building, also known as the Lewiston Civic Theater, because of a failing trust supporting the roof structure. On March 15th, 2017, the Lewiston City Theater Incorporated filed a warranty deed with Nesspris County conveying the Civic Theater building and property to the city of Lewiston due to lack of funds to repair the failing trust. In December 2017 and January 2018, the city stabilized the trust, repaired major leaks, and covered the windows and stained glass. Since the stabilization of the trust, the city building official declared the building unsafe, removing it from a condemned status. The city will incur some expense related to closing costs, which will be charged to the legislative budget. The costs are minimal, but if necessary, an amendment could be made utilizing the revenue from the sale of the property. It's my recommendation that city council approve Resolution 2023-52, authorizing the sale of the Ann Bolinger Performing Arts Center, also known as the Lewiston Civic Theater, by public auction on govdeals.com. Thank you, Counselor Schroeder. With that, I would entertain any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still in charge. Who knew? Counselor Cleaver.
I guess my big concern is driving by the building on a somewhat regular basis and look at the condition of the western facade, if you will. I really don't see anything in here, but if somebody buys us at auction, we're going to be on the hook for liability insurance. All it's going to take is one big rock popping off the face of that building and hitting somebody's car or whatever. That was my big deal back when this whole event arose back in 2015 or 16. Oh, I mean, I would assume that'd be a condition of the sale, that they're going to have liability insurance. Or is the city forever going to be on the hook with liability insurance because they got the biggest pockets?
Counselor, I'm going to look at our attorney as I speak, but my understanding is that the building will be sold as is. It's been removed from being condemned to being unsafe, and so with that, I think the buyer of that property, they're going to have to do diligence. There will be an opportunity for them to go out and walk through the property. They'll be escorted by city staff, and they can make their own assessments about risks that they may assume should they bid on and end up purchasing that property. But if you'd like, I can certainly defer to our city attorney for additional comments.
That'd be made a condition of the sale? You know, that's the big concern I have, is, you know, they're heavy stones that, you know, make up the exterior walls of that building, and if one pops out and, God forbid, it hits somebody driving down the road, the city's got the biggest pockets. Somebody paying $67,000 for this building, they don't have any insurance, and it puts us back on the hook. Well, I was looking for guidance for council.
Kayla Herman, city attorney. I don't have a direct answer for that. I would just echo the mayor's comments, but I would be happy to follow up with the city's risk manager. He works closely with the city's insurance company to see if we can provide more information, but the mayor's absolutely right. If the property is sold, it's going to be up to the new property owner to insure that property. But I would be happy to follow up, and if there's more information, we can provide it.
No, that's fine. That's what I wanted here.
Thank you, Counselor. So, out of curiosity, looking at the dollar figure, that $67,000, how did that number ever come up? Because it seems like even if the cost of removing that building, if somebody were to do that, that view lot would be worth way more than that. I'm just curious.
Well, thank you for the question, Counselor. That price was determined by looking at the expenses that the city has to date, which was April 26, 2017 through March 2, 2020, and that's a summation of all the monies that the city put into stabilizing that building and fixing some of the leaks and anything else that they had to do with that. So I have a very detailed list here of vendors and dollars amounts. I don't have on here what the repairs were specifically, but I do have another file here that has many pictures in it where there was some trust shoring and other work done to protect the glass windows in it and other assets that are inside the building. But that, and I will tell you, that amount was $65,862.30, and so my understanding is then that it was rounded to $67,000 to help cover the expense of advertising the building for sale and closing costs and things like that. The city will potentially pay some of those costs also.
Look, Cleaver.
Well, I'll follow up a little bit, I guess. Back in the day, we'd had several estimates that were turned in to the city and the estimated cost of demolition, you know, several years ago. That's probably five or six years ago now, but it was about $250,000 to remediate the site, to turn it into a nice, you know, view lot. So, I mean, I'm fine moving forward to move the property and get it off the city's back and let somebody else deal with it.
Councilman Schroeder. Thank you. I think what we're trying to do here is we're trying to... I don't get a lot of people that come and want to talk to me about city council things because evidently I don't know as many people as a lot of people here, but it is one of the things that they want to talk about. And for us to no longer have control of that building is a pretty positive thing in my mind, and if someone wants to surplus that building out, I hope they don't, but I think they could find plenty of material to surplus that out to make their money on it. I also think that it would be a great facility for someone who has the forethought and looking into the future for that type of structure, and I think they could do a pretty fantastic job of it. But that's going to be up to someone who makes that decision to purchase that, not us. We don't need to worry about that.
Yes. Actually, your question for the mayor. I thought I remember we were bound by some kind of number amount due to, like, an ordinance with the fail of it, and that's why, like, we can't just make, like, we can't sell it for $120,000 and make a bunch of profit off of it either, right? I thought we were bound by a certain amount, too.
Well, Counselor...
But maybe I misunderstood.
You know, on this one, I think if it's put out to bid, we will take the highest bid.
Right, but we had to do, like, the minimal, right, before we could then...
We decided what that minimum price would be to open it up, and we felt it would be a responsible thing to do, would be to recover what we have invested in it. Should that not be successful, then the city's going to have to make a decision on how they could move forward with surplusing that building or demolishing it.
Okay, so we could have set a higher base bid then?
Okay, I misunderstood that then. Thank you. Why don't we go on to public testimony? Do we have any public testimony? Do we have any more counselor questions?
Can I make a comment? I do, we talked about this a while ago, and I think it is the right move. We don't have the funds or place in... What to turn this into something, and so to be able to hopefully get it to someone that can turn it into a better, whether, whatever they do with it, but make it a valuable piece of property or reinit the building and turn it into some cool stuff that would be beneficial for the city. So I'm in support of this, and I think that, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens with the bidding process.
Other comments? And close the public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, counsel, for your discussion. We'll now move to Roman numeral five, B.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Towesley.
I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-52.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to approve Resolution 2023-52. Is there further discussion?
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Cleaver.
Aye.
Counselor Sticklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Next, we move to Roman numeral six, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council is so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselors. Counselor Forsman.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Towesley, to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Clerk Brocky.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Cleaver.
Aye.
Counselor Sticklemeyer.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Council, we will now move to Roman numeral seven, the Active Agenda, Item A, Prosecution Services Agreement, Third Amendment, considering approval of the Third Amendment to the Prosecution Services Agreement with Nesspris County. This is an action item, and we have our city attorney, Kayla Herman, with us to present. Kayla, please introduce yourself. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, Kayla Herman, city attorney. I discussed this item with you previously during my budget presentation, so I plan to keep it short and sweet tonight unless there are questions for you. But in essence, under this Third Amendment to the Prosecution Services Agreement with Nesspris County, the city will continue to prosecute all violations of city code, and we will also continue to handle all public records requests made to the Lewiston Police Department, and the Nesspris County Prosecutor's Office will continue to prosecute the remainder of the city's criminal caseload. The city will pay Nesspris County $114,596 for fiscal year '24, which was included in my budget, and I am available... which was included in my budget, and I am available if you have any questions.
Mayor.
Thank you, Kayla. Councillor Forsman.
Not really a question, but just more of a reminder that this is a cost-saving, correct? Because the other way would have been significantly more, and that is why we've chosen this route.
Yes, this plan has been in place for several years, and it has been working very well. But yes, you're absolutely right. If the city was to handle all of the city's criminal caseload, we would have increased personnel needs for our office.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councillor Schroeder.
I make a motion to approve the Third oh, the Third Amendment, not, okay.
I was right.
Third Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement between Nespers County and Nespers County Prosecutors and the City of Lewiston relating to prosecution services.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Schroeder, seconded by councillor Forsman to approve the Third Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement between Nespers County, the Nespers County Prosecutor, and the City of Lewiston relating to prosecution services. Is there further discussion? Clerk Brockie.
Councillor Towesley.
Aye.
Councillor Forsman.
Aye.
Councillor Schroeder.
Aye.
Councillor Cleaver.
Aye.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Kayla. Council, next up, we have Item B, Under the Active Agenda, seven, IFB-23-015-WW512 Sewer Bypass Line, Considering Awarding IFB-23-015 to ML Albright &amp; Sons Incorporated for the amount of $1,092,710. This is an action item. We have with us tonight our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson. Director, you know the routine. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you tonight, I had to talk about a sewer bypass line. So earlier in your work session tonight, we talked a lot about planning, strategic planning, and how all of the planning efforts, design efforts, roll out to tangible projects. So what is in front of you tonight is just a small piece of a very large project that we've been working on for several months, if not years, and going back all the way to the concept of what we're trying to do here. So talking about sewer in the downtown, so I'm going to use some broad strokes, probably a lot of hand motions here, but the sewer of Lewiston all funnels through pipes that go under the Clearwater River, which are basically straight north behind the window here that we're at. That takes two paths coming down here. One goes down Snake River. I'm not going to get into percentages, but that's probably, I'm going to get into percentages. 30%, 40% of the flow comes down Snake River Avenue. The majority of it comes down, works its way through the downtown, goes through Brackenberry Square, through the Tribune Building underneath between the Press Building, works its way around to what we call the South Shore Lift Station, goes under the water, and goes to the North Source Lift Station to the Treatment Plant. So that is the functionality of the sewer system that operates within the City of Lewiston. The problem with that is a lot of those pipes, the larger pipes that are in the downtown area are the oldest pipes in the system for obvious reasons. As we grew out, the larger pipes downtown were there first, and the smaller pipes up, maybe even all the way up to the Orchard, were put in last. And so that's why we have the older pipes downtown. The pipes that flow generally on this map, so from Brackenberry Square going all the way east down Main Street, so that is the 36-inch line going from, so this is that general area telling you where the line goes between the Trib, all the way through Brackenberry, then goes east, well, it flows west. The arrow is going east now, down Main Street. That is the 36-inch line, and it is full. So as we talk about a Main Street reconstruction, there are options for slip lines, that's what we call trenchless construction, but that reduces your capacity. So if we're going to go and try and minimize the impact of a Main Street reconstruction project, not digging up that sewer is going to save us a considerable amount of time and resources by just slip lining that and finding a different way of getting the bulk of that sewer on the other side of Main Street. So that was the concept. The concept is if we can get the sewer, at least a good amount of that sewer not in that line and bypass it, we can save a significant amount of money on the Main Street reconstruction. So that's the idea that came through the facility plan roughly four, three, four, five years ago. So now we're going to try and find a way to get that sewer north of the railroad tracks onto the bypass. As you are aware, there's nothing but private property lines on the railroad between Main Street and the bypass, especially if you have to cross D Street. In our course of the last probably year or so, the Bargain Hunter Mall came in and for redevelopment, and that is owned by Alexander Investments. I'm not quite sure exactly what their LLC is, but I reached out to Mr. Mark Alexander and said, hey, we'd be willing to buy the easement, which we already have, to move that bypass line to go north through their parking lot, across the railroad tracks, onto the actual physical ITD bypass there that's on the other side of the train tracks. Mr. Alexander was very understanding, but he also said, I am about to put a parking lot there in the spring of 2024. The last thing I don't, I want you to do is to wait for the city to come up with the full design for the project and then rip up my brand-new parking lot. He was dead set that he didn't want us parking, which is legitimate. You don't want to invest in your development of your project, have new tenants move in, and then have the city come in and rip it up. So our agreement, which we've already agreed to on the easement, was that we would put this, it is going to be a dry line, it's going to go under the, under the parking, to-be parking lot of the Bargain Hunter Mall, jacket board through the railroad tracks, and then dead end at the bypass. Then we will complete the project once we have the rest of the design done and add the access through all the property that we need to get through in the bypass and tie it in. So at that point, we will be able to pull off enough flow from the downtown, evaluate that line, determine the course forward on the Main Street project. So I guess that all to say, this is the route forward in which we're going to attempt to save a significant amount of money in construction on the reconstruction of Main Street. This is all paid through rate money, so this is a sewer enterprise project, so not coming out of property taxes, coming out of the sewer enterprise fund. I think that is the high point. It's a million dollars. It was likely, it was about $100,000 over what engineers estimate is. I think everybody in our, in our construction world right now is getting close. I think we were seeing bids at 20, 30, 40% higher than normal. We're now getting closer to understanding what the new construction world looks like post-COVID. We're happy with the contract, we're happy with the bid, and staff recommends approval. And I think with that, I am prepared for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director. Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Director, it sounds like a good plan. My biggest concern is that Bargain Hunters Mall, they really were impacted by all of our other work we've done all summer. So does this project have some kind of a process that will cut down on the impact of them as far as parking and stuff?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, interesting question. I mean, it is a good question. It's an interesting solution because we negotiated the easement with the owner, and obviously there's tenants in the building. And so I think we, and this is all, I mean, the time, there will be work at the curb, but we won't be ripping up the front at the actual Bargain Hunter Mall there. There will be no impact on the parking in the front area like we did with the water main. This is all within that. And they've already been doing a lot of work back. That's where they've been staging for all the rehab work for the building itself. So I'm optimistic. I think we could probably do a little reach out with the tenants there and let them know what our plan is and our schedule, and if there are any impacts to their building. But it should, it will be all within their parking lot to the edge of the right-of-way, running just straight north-south. So I'm thinking they can divert all of their parking east of all the work that we'll be doing there.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
I had another one, sorry. So you were talking about this, it isn't an interim, it's actually will be a long-term solution to?
This will be the long-term solution. What makes this one unique is on the map, the green section is what we're building. We have, we will not be building the blue line. So we will put this in, it is a dry line, but timing-wise, we have to get it in now because of the construction schedule for Bargain Hunter. So it will, we'll spend a million dollars for a sewer line that we won't utilize for maybe a year or two.
Councillor Schroeder.
I move to award IFB-23-015 to ML Albright &amp; Sons Incorporated and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and ML Albright &amp; Sons Incorporated on or after October 1, 2023.
Then moved by councillor Schroeder, seconded by councillor Cleaver to award IFB-23-015 to ML Albright &amp; Sons Incorporated and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and ML Albright &amp; Sons Incorporated on or after October 1, 2023. Is there further discussion? Very none. Clerk Brockie.
Councillor Towesley.
Aye.
Councillor Forsman.
Aye.
Councillor Schroeder.
Aye.
Councillor Cleaver.
Aye.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Council passes the motion. Thank you, council. Next, we will move to Active Agenda, seven C. 21st Street, 7th Avenue to 19th Avenue Fiber Seal Construction, considering approving the construction contract to VSSI International Incorporated in the amount of $2 million. This is an action item. Director Johnson.
Mayor and City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. I have a special treat for you tonight. I am going to be done talking right now. I'm going to hand it over to the project engineer, Alana Bailey, who will give you the overview of what the project is.
Thank you, Director, and welcome supervisor, project supervisor Bailey. Please introduce yourself for the record, and just remember to speak up loudly, clearly, and slowly so that those listening at home can hear what you have to say. It's very important. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am Alana Bailey, Engineering Project Supervisor. And before you tonight is an agreement between the City of Lewiston and VSSI Engineering for the construction phase of a design-build project. This is the 21st Street corridor that runs from 7th to Nespers Grade. In front of you on the screen is the webpage we have built for this. So I'm going to scroll down so you can see roughly the area that we're covering. This will be a fiber seal, kind of a two-phased project. Phase one will be doing the concrete work, some pavement patching, and some stormwater manhole work. And the plan is for that to be completed by November 10 of this year. And the phase two will be with a fiber seal, which includes micro milling, fiber seal, and some striping to put everything back so it's usable next year to be completed by June 15. Before you is a contract for a total amount of $2,050,816. This is the third contract for this work, and it will be the, anticipated to be the final contract. The initial contract was for an owner's advisor's agent for approximately $62,000, and then a second, and then the initial contract with VSSI for the design-build agreement for approximately $435,000. I'm here for questions if you have some.
Mayor.
Councillor Forsman.
Trying to remember if this was the seal that we're, it's like a new seal that they started in Utah or something? It's not like a chip seal, it's a new kind of seal that we're?
Yes, something we have not done here before. It's essentially a slurry seal with fibers in it that adds strength to it.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that this was that project. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councillor Towesley.
When we, when we were first talking about 21st Street, it sounded like we needed to be basically tearing it up to the, to below grade even to get it to where it needed to be. Is this going to be, this is a Band-Aid, is that right?
Yes and no. So yes, the fiber seal is a Band-Aid. We're hoping to get 10 years out of it.
Years?
10 years. But part of this work will be the permanent solution. So the ADA ramps we do, the sidewalk and the stormwater, that will be part of the permanent solution.
Good, thank you.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor.
So in the write-up here, it states it's going to be moved till 2024. It said that the intersection wouldn't be done at the same time as 21st Street. And then later on, it states that all the work will be completed no later than June 15. Does that include the intersection?
Do you mean the intersection of Brighton and Fifth?
Fifth and Brighton.
Okay, yes. So I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. That work has been pulled. That was in the original design-build contract to include it. When we realized we were not going to get the fiber seal done this year, we pulled out the Brighton and Fifth intersection for fiber. And we are doing a separate project that's going to be a grind and inlay of pavement that Po Asphalt is going to be completing for the city in mid-October.
This year?
This year, yes, this year.
Okay, I have a follow-up question.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
And then on this, kind of like with my Bargain Hunter thing, it looks, this concrete, all the ramps and stuff are going to impact a lot of businesses. So is it going to be a lot of interaction with the businesses to coordinate which ones they tear out? Or just start from the bottom and start ripping them out and go as they go?
So we are going to do everything we can to not impact access. Right now, the plan is every business will have access the entire time in some format. It might be half of their driveways open, but we will keep access the whole time. As far as interaction with property owners, this has been moving pretty quickly. So we just put out a press release and sent letters out last Friday. We have a public meeting scheduled for this Thursday to talk with everyone. And VSSI is going to be hitting the streets first thing in the morning tomorrow upon, if City Council approves tonight, to go door-to-door to start talking with businesses and give them information.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councillor Forsman.
You might not have this, but I'm going to see. So if we had chose to do it the other way, like redo all of 21st Street, what would the estimated cost be for that?
I don't have that number with me, so you're right, I don't have it. And we did run those numbers, and this was a significant savings, but I don't want to give you a number without having it in front of me.
Further comments, questions, councillors? Motions? Councillor Schroeder.
I move to approve the agreement between the City of Lewiston and VSSI International, Inc. for construction associated with the 21st Street Fiber Seal Project.
Second.
Then moved by councillor Schroeder, seconded by councillor Towesley to approve the agreement between the City of Lewiston and VSSI International, Inc. for construction associated with the 21st Street Fiber Seal Project. Is there further discussion? Very none. Clerk Brockie.
Councillor Towesley.
Aye.
Councillor Forsman.
Aye.
Councillor Schroeder.
Aye.
Councillor Cleaver.
Aye.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Director Johnson, and thank you, Alana, for being here tonight. Next up, council, we have Item D, Resolution 2023-51, Considering Declaring Various Items of City of Lewiston Property to be Surplus. This is an action item. We have our Equipment Services Manager, Robin Braun, with us tonight. Robin, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly, clearly, slowly, so those at home can hear what you have to say. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Robin Braun, Fleet Service Management. Tonight, I bring before you the vehicles and equipment that we are planning on putting on surplus. These are vehicles that have been replaced with newer vehicles. Normally, we only have one surplus sale a year. This year, I wanted to get it pushed through so that this equipment isn't getting, losing value and that it's out in the weather longer than it needs to be. And plus, we're low on storage for it, so if you guys have any questions, I'd...
Thank you. Councillors? Councillor Forsman.
Kind of a comment, but kind of a question at the same time, I guess. A lot of the reasons we have to start getting rid of the old vehicles and updating is because of parts also, right? Like, we can't get parts for certain things to supply to and continue to maintain.
Yeah, the two rollers that are on this list, we're getting to the point that it's getting hard to get parts for them, and they're getting very expensive to repair.
Versus the newer ones would be less expensive to repair.
Yes, and the ones that we had gotten were lease returns. They weren't brand-new, but they were very good-used pieces of equipment that were only a few years old and very, very low hours on them, so.
Thank you.
Well, Robin, I wish you much luck in selling that 2002 caseload. It's a fine piece of equipment for anyone listening. It's a fine piece of equipment for anyone listening. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Towesley.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash fifty-one.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve Resolution twenty-two-three.
Okay.
Let me restate that. Thank you. I was so excited about. Been moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash fifty-one. Is there further discussion? During non-clerk, Rocky.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counsel, and thank you, Robin, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, we're going to jump over eight and move to Roman numeral nine, unfinished and new business. Item A, City Council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently for the City Council or an item that may come before the city in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussions. So, Counselors, I will open it up for any comments.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
I want to thank the men and women that have sacrificed their lives on that horrible day of nine eleven and that went in there knowing that they might ever come back to see their families, to save others. It is truly a heroic act and hard to understand how someone can have such courage to be able to do that. And it's amazing that we have men and women that want to do that and to think of others before themselves. And so I just want to say that I never forget, and I am in remembrance of that day, and I thank our firemen and our policemen every day for what they do. I also saw some firemen out in their uniform, walking with flags for today's never forget and remembrance. I commend that. That was awesome to see, and it made me proud to be here in Lewiston. I went actually on a cruise just this last week and went to the Caribbean. And although it was beautiful and I loved the water, I came back and just missed home. And years ago, I heard one person say, and I asked him, and he was in the military, and I asked if he missed his home, and he said, well, ma'am, it wouldn't be home if you didn't miss it. And that's definitely me because I love my Lewiston here, and I'm just so proud to be a part of this community and hopefully making a difference for all. I want to also point out that the names, the candidate list names are out, so please go and do your research on those running. The Marine Anderson, David Funk, Jessica Klein, Brennan Lefty, Rick Eldridge, Jim Kleberg, Darlene Lambert, and John Spickelmeier. Look into them, talk to them, ask them questions, see what they stand on, and look forward to watching this go through in this campaign. So I wish all of them the best of luck. And again, I'm here if anybody has questions or needs help with this. Appreciate you guys running and willing to serve.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schroder.
Thank you. On our work session, we had a review from our city planner in regards to the comprehensive rewrite that we're doing in Vision Lewiston twenty forty-four. And we had a public outreach at the market last Saturday. Some of the most interesting comments that I was just amazed. These are people that are new to our city, only been here maybe years, one was only a couple of months. And they say, it's perfect just the way it is. Why do you want to change it? And I said, I love that, but if we like it the way it is and we have to maintain it, and we have to plan to do that. So they understood. But that wasn't just one person. That was several comments, and especially of people that had been newcomers to our area. So I'm pleased with that. If they're happy now and we can make it even better by twenty forty-four. And the survey goes on to the seventeenth. So please, please reach out to the city's website and take that survey. We appreciate it, and it was so great to meet so many people at that outreach. It was just great fun.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Item B, under Roman numeral nine, City Boards and Commission, please, none updates. Are there any more shared today? Counselor Forsman.
Got ahead of you. Parks and Rec is busy as ever and trying to do a lot to keep the community engaged and together. Last meeting was talking, obviously, about the community park. That's a big one. And maybe some new structures that might be beneficial for structures that you can rent out for parties and stuff. So maybe adding another one of those might be beneficial. So that's kind of what is going on in the public works world. You can attend the meetings if you want. We don't ever, I think we have maybe one time that I've been there, we had citizens comment. But that was a planned citizens comment. So come to that if you want to have some citizens comments or want something that you, there's something you want to see out of Parks and Rec. It'd be good to see some citizens there and proud to be on that committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there updates? Counselor Spickelmeier.
Mayor, I'm on the Urban Forestry and Cemetery Commission. It's kind of a reach, but I had several comments sent to me about the trees at Pioneer Park. There's a lot of them that are dead and dying up there, really big ones. But I reached out to Tim, Director, and he let me know that our arborist has identified several of the trees, and we do have a plan in place to remove and replace a lot of them this fall. So that's good news.
It is good news. Counselor Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep. So tomorrow, since we had a pretty good discussion about the renewal agency at today's work session, just if anybody's interested, I think you can probably show up or watch on remote is the meeting at noon. And then on Thursday, we have the M P O meeting. So anything to report yet?
Thank you, Counselor Kleberg. Appreciate all of the updates. Another problem with this too, if there's no more updates, then I'll jump to mayor comments. I'm going to repeat what I said earlier, the comp plan update. Please submit comments. So if you're listening at home, if you're listening online, if you're a city council member current or candidate, we'd like to hear from you, and that applies to me. I need to be a little bit more proactive on that. I have submitted a couple, but it wasn't a very good effort. I need to do better. So please, anyone, submit comments in. It's very important that we hear from you. I want to say thank you again to Patty Sprudy and the daughters of the American Revolution for being here tonight. And in recognition of that, I do want to just read the preamble to the Constitution. You have a copy of that on your desk here, Counselors, but it's very important to remember these words. "Preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." So if you have a chance, folks, during Constitution Week, September seventeenth to the twenty-third, pick up your pocket, copy the Constitution, and look at it. It's quite interesting. I have read it several times, but there's a lot of very interesting words of wisdom in there and why we are who we are today and even on this nine eleven celebration. There are a lot of truths that echo in our Constitution then that apply today. Then I also, I see our left, our H R director. Am my eyes not working? She left, okay. Well, thank you for being here, Nikki, but just to let everyone know, the city has been without a code enforcement officer for a while, but we're in the process of recruiting for what we're calling a community resource officer. So we want to be very proactive and very positive about this. So for those listening at home especially, we hope to have that position filled soon. And just like the title says, a community resource, we want you to be able to use this person in this position for the betterment of our city. And we have a lot of work to do, but I know we, as a city, are going to make the same commitment to do the best that we can. But anyway, we're looking forward to this. We're going to look at possibly, you know, putting a wrap on the vehicle or something or promoting this. I need to talk to Director Groh about this. But, you know, we're looking at trying to brand this a little bit. Just be very positive and get out and do some very positive things with this. So people should be able to flag that person down, share their concerns, and we should be able to address those in a very positive manner because that's what we're here for. It's our community, just like Counselor Schroder said, what would you change? And we said, nothing. Well, okay, that's great, but we do have some things that we need to work on a little bit. And then lastly, I just want to point out the Living Lewiston magazine. I don't give our P I O much attention sometimes, but she does a very good job for us, and she puts out this magazine. It's been submitted for an award, and we don't know yet whether we're going to get one or not. But just to recognize some of the efforts that her office is doing and what we're trying to do as a city to stay engaged with the public, the citizens tell you what we're up to. We have this Living Lewiston magazine, and I'm sure that our Public Information Officer, Carol Mauer, would very much appreciate getting any feedback you may have on how we can improve this or changes we can make. But I appreciate the work that she's doing. She is out of town at a conference, and so I wish her all the luck and see if she can come home with an award. If she doesn't, she still, I think, gets a lot of credit for being recognized even at that level. So, Counselors, Roman numeral nine, D, Agenda Topics. Okay, well, move to number ten, Roman numeral ten, adjournment. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, Counsel.